Twenty-one, Mr. Carringer, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Father, thank you for this, uh, another day to give in Salerno, and, uh, we just, uh, thank God to, to serve here in Grand County, to serve our, uh, our kids and our, our staff, and so we just, uh, pray your blessings now in this meeting, and we'd say, do those things with praise in your, pray that the school starts back, that, uh, keep our, uh, kids and faculty, staff safe, whether it be traveling or, uh, the virus, just, uh, pray we get off to a good start, will we lift our nation up to you during these critical times, just pray your, uh, your blessings and your hand would, uh, touch our nation once again. Again, Father, we thank you, pray in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, C, approval of the agenda, uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of C budget amendments with Lester Green, and also add the approval of the minutes, uh, for D. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now, do I have approval, uh, of the agenda now? Yeah, I, we're approving the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I, all in favor? Any opposed? Now, do I have the approval of the minutes from last meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? This night, do we have any individuals or groups to address the Board of Education?
No, sir, we don't have anyone that signed that to address the board.
Okay. The floor is now open for public comment period. Do I have a motion to close public comment period? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, reports and discussion items. Personnel this night.
Yes, during closed session, I will bring you a variety of names for, uh, several positions for, uh, beginning the two, the twenty-twenty-one school semester.
And this night, a B activity bus disposal.
Uh, yes, I will, and I'll probably ask Attorney Davis to step in to this. Uh, you have board policy already that, uh, determines disposal of property. Uh, we do have an activity bus, a nineteen-eighty-nine activity bus, um, that we would wish to dispose of. Uh, my recommendation to you is that we advertise that bus, um, and that you seek a, uh, minimum bid for the bus of two thousand dollars, and, uh, do you have anything to add to that, Attorney Davis?
No, just the motion includes that the bus is no longer necessary pursuant to Christmas Club.
It has been pulled off our bus fleet, it's a nineteen-eighty-nine, it's thirty-one years old, it's that activity bus, uh, it's been replaced by newer models, and we no longer have it in our service.
So, that's it, the motion includes no, the bus is no longer necessary pursuant to the state, uh, rotation requirements, with a, they have a minimum bid of two thousand dollars.
And we do have some interest in that bus, we just wanted to, uh, in the spirit of transparency, to go ahead and advertise that public, uh, those bids. Uh, they're open here generally, and it is, uh, advertised when they're open, and typically it would be, in that case, probably Christmas Club as the director of that department. But it's all noted, uh, here. And it would be in the paper, and, and it'd be, it'd be up in the public control. Father, we make a motion.
Well, we need a motion now. Do I have a motion to approve, uh, disposal of an activity bus that's thirty-one years old, because the bus is no longer necessary, and put it up for a minimum bid of two thousand dollars? Do I have a motion to approve that?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. All right, D, uh, middle school construction progress, is Mr. White here?
Well, no, he's also pointing, so I'll, I'll, I will take that.
Oh, you're gonna take it.
You can pass this all the way down to Ms. Biesler.
I, do I keep, I keep?
People want to pass this.
Pass it around, okay.
Yes, if you'll pass this down to, like, here, then it's, well, people might pass this over. So, at our last meeting, we, we have discussed the middle school construction, you noted when we opened bids, we had, uh, two contractors to bid, they were both over budget, um, we chose to tentatively, uh, go into, uh, mediation with the, uh, Western Builders, uh, contractor. We have since done that, uh, we've worked with Jason Marino, with county government, myself, Kevin, um, I've talked with, uh, Ms. Davis about that this morning, and, uh, also worked with the architect. So, uh, we were able to shake a little bit off the cost of that. What we have found was, when this project was proposed a year and a half ago, COVID had not hit, materials had not soared, and so what we asked for was less than the reality of building the building. Um, we have also since talked with Nathan Molly, who is the BPI, uh, school, contracting school construction director at the state, and they are willing, uh, to send us the additional money that we would ask for, uh, because we really asked for less than a third of what we were eligible to ask for anyway, because of, we just tried to keep it as reasonable as possible, and we knew that the county was not going to be able to match fifteen million dollars, so therefore we asked for, um, them to only match, uh, the, the, for, our total grant award before was three point two million dollars from the state, with the local, it's a three-to-one match essentially, so the local match was one million sixty-six thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars, so our total grant award was four million two hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars. If you'll follow along the sheet that I gave you, once, uh, we opened our bids, the, the low bid was from Western Builders, and it was opened at four billion one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Once we have talked with them and revised what could happen, and they told that, uh, looking at value engineering estimates and amounts, uh, that bid was able to come down a little bit to three million nine hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So, that's not a lot, but that's a little bit, uh, that helps us some. So, the, that, you see the revised bid in front of you? There were two of the alternative bids that we actually have to have, uh, one was alternative A-one, which was for, uh, filling in a window at a CTE classroom, uh, that was, in order to make it a regular classroom, we would need to fill that window at sixty-five hundred dollars, and then the A-three alternative was for the storage building, if you remember the, the building that the, uh, carpentry and mechanic shop use now, uh, will have to be moved in order to put the new middle school wing there. So, that's to the eighty-seven thousand dollars we have researched, and we feel that that actually is a, uh, accurate estimate. Right now, it really, honestly, probably fifty thousand dollars, that's going to be concrete for that building. Uh, so, those, uh, without that said, then, the, the contractor price would, uh, go to four million seventy-eight thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars. If you'll follow along, that's not the total bill, cost of building, there's other things that are added on to that, um, after the contractor is done. So, the F-F and E, the furniture and equipment, uh, a hundred thousand dollars to put desks and chairs and tables and those things in, back in the classrooms, you don't, uh, wanna take old furniture to a brand-new building, uh, there will be some that will move, but we also need to leave that furniture at the elementary school, because we'll have classes moving into those, you know, those classrooms as well. The IT, the, uh, technology, that's to run the, uh, catwalk, and those lines, and to put in any of the technology that we need in those new classrooms, uh, there's a testing increments that you, uh, with, uh, as the progression of the building goes on, forty thousand dollars, architect fees are a set percentage anyway, um, and that was set at the very beginning of the contract with the architect, for two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, topo, that we talk, the topography, uh, work that will have to be done is another twelve ply, and then there's a three percent contingency fee that is on all contracts, because you never know, you know, hopefully you wouldn't go over three percent, but, um, that's, that's a substantial part of all contracts, so you have no regional contract with architects. So, that gives us an additional cost of six hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars. When you look at the adjusted total for the contractor and additional cost, that's the total construction cost of four billion six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, uh, six hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So, really what that shakes up is we need to request an additional four hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars, of which, uh, it's a three-to-one match, so three hundred and eleven thousand six hundred from the state, and a hundred and three thousand from the local government, is the difference, and, so that's much better. What we left here before, we were thinking that we're about a million out, so we have moved around the negotiations, and we feel really good with the fact that we're at four hundred thousand versus a million. So, uh, what I would, yeah, uh, well, first is, do you have questions? Because I'm sure that's, that's very confusing, and...
My question is, uh, you're saying we're gonna have additional requests from the state and local, right?
That's correct.
Of this, uh, four thousand fourteen, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a, the addition is to who's going to your one, or do we have what we're asking?
That, that...
I was gonna miss that.
It's, it's in your chart, the local match is at one oh three, six seven.
Okay, I see.
And then the state, because it's a three-to-one match, for ever, every three dollars they give to the state, one dollar comes from the local government.
Is that what would be a problem?
Uh, I don't foresee it to be, uh, it's, it's no problem, we've already got the approval from the state, uh, of really whatever we, we need, and I really, uh, think it's very favorable with county commissioners, they've been involved in the whole process, from the very beginning, Jason Marino has been, uh, setting a level meeting, and, um, has helped with the revisions, and, um, he, he certainly has approved, you know, that, but he doesn't speak with the commissioners, but, um, I do know that they're very interested in helping us see this project out. So, we would, I would need you to, once you feel comfortable with this, go ahead and approve this, and then it will go to them to approve for their additional amount. We've already got the four point two million dollars, but we need the additional four fourteen thousand, so I, I would just need your approval on the additional amount of money, and immediate approval for us to go ahead with that, uh, alternate A-three for the storage building, we could go ahead and get that cost secured, after the first of the year, steel prices really go up quickly, and we need to go ahead and, and get in, get that cost locked in, on that particular, we need that to happen first, so that we can take that building down first, and go ahead and get them moved into the storage buildings, so. But we've got the money to do that already, that's part of that.
So, we need to approve that now?
Uh, especially if you don't have any more questions, or if you have more questions, I'm allowed to answer those.
And the storage building is going?
The storage building will go, uh, essentially in the baseball field parking lot in front of the, on the bus garage side, there's some, uh, buses that are parked there right now, it will...
Just how would you deal where we park those cars?
That's correct, yes.
So, that's the closest we could get?
That's the closest we could get, and it's still, uh, and this, that is, uh, allowable, it's fine with the parking area for the county structures.
Okay.
And they, they actually helped design that.
I may ask that question.
Yeah, they actually helped design that, we want to, uh, for, to help meet their needs, so, it'll be a well, well, then.
Do I have a motion to approve the add alternative A-three for the storage building, eighty-seven thousand dollars? Uh, do I have a motion to approve that for immediate? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Mr. Nelson, I guess our approval is a big contingent on, uh, the county commissioners for them, therefore, for the next.
Okay, so, do I need to amend that?
No, no, Mr. Nelson. So, the next, the next will be approval of the revised budget and request, but it's also feeling the county commissioners' mind.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised allocations for the, uh, rid, from, from the original grant award, uh, to, uh, contention upon the county commissioners, uh, approving, uh, their end of it for the local match? Is that all I have to say?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve that?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, is that it? Okay, board policy for Ms. Davis.
All right. You have a package I handed out this morning, these are first read, first read, so you'll have an opportunity to look at them in more detail for the next meeting. Uh, the first one is ethics and purchasing function, it is completely rewritten, so everything you see there on your copy, um, is revised. You still held to a standard, though, um, that there's no direct or indirect, um, benefit from, uh, from someone with whom you contract, um, for supplies for the school, uh, for construction. The main thing is, in number three, it talks about, um, not having a financial or other interest in or receive a tangible personal benefit, and the reason I want to point that out is tangible personal benefit sounds like, you know, you've got a new something in hand, a new Ferrari, and, you know, so you have the keys to the new Ferrari, but the, the definition of tangible per, personal benefit is much broader than that, it's not just something of substance, but it could be a job promotion, um, so, that, that's the only thing, it's all revised, it's, it's better, it's well, it's much better written, but, um, just tangible doesn't mean it's an object, it means, um, uh, non-substantive too, uh, something you can't quite put your hand on, but it might, and I, an example would be job promotion. Uh, disposal of personal property, which we just did with the bus, uh, the changes here, you, you, the board needs to look at, uh, if you'll go to A, um, well, let's go back to the first paragraph, that, that's been added, um, while we have state law on the disposal of surplus property, uh, you still have to go by whatever guidelines are in a federal grant, so your grant, your federal grant will say how to dispose of property, and if that's in conflict with your state policy here, you still follow your federal, uh, guidelines, so that's new. Um, the other thing, if you go to A, right now, the board permits the superintendent to dispose of personal property worth, worth less than, and we got five thousand dollars in our current policy. So, uh, these are the procedures for a property worth less than thirty thousand overall, but if you want to change that, if you want to leave it at five thousand, or if you want to change it to the max, which is less than thirty thousand, that's fine, but, um, here, whatever amount you put in there, the superintendent must make a finding that the property is no longer necessary, and then you commit that to a writing, and the superintendent decides whether to advertise in the paper, um, for bids, or you can take a private bid, and then advertise in the paper that you have a private bid, remember, we don't give the name of the person, we just say it, we have a bid for two thousand dollars, and then, then, that allows for an offset period. So, right now, it's five thousand, so if you all decide by the next meeting, then the next paragraph is for property worth five thousand and one dollars, twenty-nine-nine-nine-nine, the board makes all the funding, and decides how to advertise.
And we have very few things that come through for this policy, ever, and I really personally could have not even brought up the activity bus to you, but just in a, you know, just in the name of transparency, and I wanted to, went through your board meeting a little this morning, and I brought that to you.
Well, I think just as a matter of practice, it's...
It is.
It's come, major things like...
We really don't sell a lot of property, you know.
Has come before the board. So, we'll think about those amounts for the next meeting, and then, even though your superintendent has thought for, for example, right now, five thousand, or something worth less than five thousand, your superintendent still has to provide a semi-annual report to you to let you know what property's been sold, um, what school property's been sold, okay? Give some requests, um, and that's all. Policy A-two-twenty, um, this has been completely rewritten, so when you read over it, it's entirely rewritten, you've always had a policy about gifts and requests, but again, I think it's, it's, um, it, it's, um, the, it's better stated in, in this rewrite. The superintendent, that, that is the first step, evaluates the donation in order to determine whether it's suitable for the school. And the guidelines on donations is that, uh, one, it has to be suitable, and controls on the donation by the person making the donation, um, is not, uh, something that the school can estimate, to have some, um, some control outside the school on the donation, and I think that's been some problems in the past, and then under B, accepting donations, the principals cannot accept donations, and I, you know, when I go over these policies, they're not issues necessarily here, but across the state, there've been a lot of issues with, uh, principals accepting donations, and the controls in this policy aren't in place. Again, in section B, when accepting a donation, um, what you allow your superintendent to accept versus what has to come to the board, that's figured, filled in. Right now, your policy is the superintendent may accept donations up to, and you have any amount, um, there, there was, currently, there's no limitation. So, I think we need to clean up B.
How long is that any close, do you think, after? Getting up there?
No, but I don't think it's an issue, because any donation, I think, has come to the board anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any huge donations anyway, and it would be, you said a five thousand dollar, and then a high fifty, five, I think.
I think all the times I'm aware, donations for building supplies, or, um, it's ended up coming to the board.
And principals are really good, if a business gives them a donation, for a, they all, I mean, they've been all that by me anyway, so, it's never been an issue of them about, you know.
So, what do you want us to clean up?
Well...
What would you like to see us clean up?
I think there ought to be a figure in there, and being, um, uh, donations up to a certain amount, and, um, you, you, just for purposes of policy, I mean, your superintendent, you got a bound, brings everything to the board.
That's true.
But I just think for purposes of policy, there ought to be some limit in there.
This might stay off, this might stay off.
What do you recommend, five thousand, ten thousand, what do you recommend?
Well, ten thousand, I would recommend.
Yeah.
Because you, you, your superintendent's still down by the same requirements in here.
Or just put the amount there.
Okay. So, up to ten thousand, and then that would, the value that exceeds ten thousand, come to the board.
And then the next paragraph that exceeds ten thousand, is that what you just said?
Yes, yes. And, uh, the rest of it, I mean, it's rewritten, but it's rewritten well, it needed, it needed rewritten, and of course, you know, someone wants to donate playground equipment, for example, it can't be their choice, it has to be the choice that is the, the school sa, new school safety regulation, so. Okay, eighty-three oh five, federal grant administration, um, go to page, uh, let's see.
Attorney Davis, did you mean to skip stack responsibility, seventy-three hundred?
Uh, I'm coming back to that, um, I needed to look at somebody's folder, okay? I've got an extra one here, seventy-three hundred. I'll come back to it. Uh, the federal grant administration, eighty-three oh five, if, if you will go to A-one, A-two, A-three, um, A-four, um, under A-four, that is completely rewritten, and what it does is include, um, agent of the school system, whether you're an employee of the school system, a board member of the school system, or an agent of the school system, um, engaging in the procurement of goods, um, you have to meet you on federal grant administration, you have to meet these guidelines, and, uh, Lester Green is always on top of this, when I've talked to him, uh, he's very up to date on the federal grant administration, but I think that this ration of policies right here is getting board, boards are, you know, they're powerful, you spend money, you have access to federal money, state money, and they're just trying to bring you the guidelines with ethics, um, and, um, who, that you don't benefit personally, and this, they add agent, an agent of the school system, and, um, I'm neither an employee of the school system nor a board member, but I certainly represent the school, so, that's what, that would be more an agent, somebody closely connected to you, and, uh, would, and you would have that person out doing for your children, so, okay? So, it's just extending the warm, um, ethical contract. Then, policy ninety-one-ten, use and selection of architects, this gives some new guidelines here, and if you have a project that's based on professional... here, and if you have a project that's based on professional fees, and, um, again, this is rewritten because if it's a state project, this is your state law, if it's federal, you have any federal monies in it, the federal guidelines are going to preempt these, and when you have projects, um, with an estimated professional fee of fifty thousand or more, your superintendent, um, solicits proposals to service providers, and it's based on nine criteria, which outlined in D one A, and, um, you can use a history of, um, people that have been involved in the school before and factors that the superintendent thinks are related. Then, projects, um, with, uh, less than a fifty thousand dollar, uh, professional fee, uh, that's under, uh, section two, your guidelines don't vary that much, um, but, and that's what we have to address though, in the number two project, with an estimated professional fee of less than fifty thousand, right now, you have, your, um, current policy is ten thousand, and that allows your, um, superintendent broader, um, well, broader authority. If it's less than ten thousand, this is less than fifty, so you need to decide if you want to keep your current policy at less than ten, or if you want to do less than fifty. So, you need to decide that in your next board meeting, but your current one is, um, less than ten.
And, and that's pretty restrictive, um, unless we do work ourselves, because you can hardly replace a door for less than ten thousand dollars. So, uh, you know, it's certainly up to you, but the fifty thousand dollars would allow us to do a small project without having to bring everything to the board, and you're going to hear it anyway, but, um, the, at the cost of things right now, um, they've really skyrocketed based on when ten thousand dollars, that would probably be a whole lot more when that policy was the place to start with, so.
Well, I think when you look at these policies, they come recommended, they're the figures that are recommended, but there's still the state going to cut off the board's ability to make changes, but, but, and the state's not mandating that to be fifty, but, um-
That's probably what most systems-
It's just recommended. Okay. This is not ninety-four hundred, um, the sale, disposal and lease of board owned real property. Notice that under, um, disposal of surplus property, you also have real estate, and it's not just personal property, it's real estate, but this is specific to real property, and what's going on here is that, at the very top, I want to, third board, or third paragraph, the change here is a reminder that the board shall lease available board owned buildings and land to charter schools when required by the law. I think, I think, and again, an issue for you right now, no, but for, um, boards across the state, that's been a hotly contested issue, a board owned property going to, um, charter schools, and the charter school has first option for purchase or a lease. There's one exception, if you can show that it's not economically or practically feasible, you don't have to lease any property to a charter school, but like schools have, you know, you've moved or abandoned a building, so you have some, uh, property that you're not using, but you still own it, but if a charter school were to request it, uh, you have to show that, you have to do it now, you can show it's not economically or practically feasible, so. Then let's go back to staff responsibilities on seventy-three hundred. Does everyone have seventy-three hundred? Okay. This is for, um, all school employees, um, and so it's rewritten to say, it's not just your certified teachers, um, it's all school employees, like your maintenance, um, teachers, that they have to report to the superintendent, um, any type of offenses, um, criminal, whether there's arrest, um, it's not just whether you've been convicted, um, it's whether there's been an arrest, so that's what staff responsibilities are, and it's the entire staff, and they clarify that, that it's not just teachers. Okay. That is it for personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I have a motion to go into closed session.
Me. Those two.
Okay, pursuant up to the provision of the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point, point eleven, parentheses, A three, and one, one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses, C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education going to closed session to receive advice from, uh, Ms. Davis, attorney of the Grand County School Board, which, uh, advice comes within the purview of the attorney client privilege. The advice will be general, major advice about legal issues and legal matters. Personnel motions pursuant to the division of North Carolina, General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses, C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education going to closed session for the purpose of considering personnel matters, personnel matters as defined in the law, allowed by North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses, A six, and the North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash three twenty-one point.
Do I have a second? Say, all in favor? We're now in closed session. Are we going to stay in here?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Ma- Madison Bellinger as an elementary teacher.
Do I have a motion to accept Madison Bellinger as an elementary teacher? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Jesse Miller in the interim position as a middle school math teacher through the end of this school year.
Do I have a motion to employ Jesse Miller as an interim math teacher in the middle school until the end of the school year?
Mr. Bellson, I would remind board that I have a, he is a brother to my daughter.
Okay. What is the board's wish? Mr. Carringer has said that he has, uh, a vested interest because his son is married, uh, to this, this young man's dau- uh, sister.
Is it a conflict of interest? I mean, do you feel like you can be fair and impartial?
Absolutely. I'd say I can vote.
Yeah, so do I have a motion to accept, uh, Mr. Carringer being able to vote on, uh, Jesse Miller? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve Jesse Miller as an interim math teacher in the middle school until the end of the school year?
You need a motion?
I need a motion.
You've got one.
Got a motion, do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Um, I recommend that you approve Gunner Ruthic as a volunteer.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Gunner Ruthic as a basketball volunteer?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
I have no further recommendations.
All right, do you have any announcements for the school?
I do, uh, I will announce in public session that we found out yesterday in conjunction with Grand County Health Department and Orlando Hospital System, that we were awarded a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to bring back the school based health center to campus, so that we'll employ a nurse practitioner to be on campus and provide medical services to our students and to our staff. So, we're very excited about that, and we'll begin to work out the details, and I'll be in touch with you.
That's good stuff.
Very excited about that, um, and all the other news I have is that your next board meeting, uh, will be on February, a regularly scheduled meeting, the first Tuesday in February, which is the, the February second, and Attorney Davis, we will, that morning-
You will get me up earlier.
-begin at eight o'clock with board training.
Now, excuse me?
That morning, we will begin at eight o'clock with the board training session.
Board training, next meeting.
Uh, and, um, that will probably be board ethics, and then we will have our regularly scheduled meeting at ten o'clock that day. Usually I try to feed you on those days because we've kept you all morning.
Breakfast?
Uh, we'll probably do one, because we're at four.
Don't just get it.
Doesn't say do breakfast.
Something's wrong, okay, breakfast.
Excuse me?
That's a good try.
Yeah, so we'll do six hours total training, so that'll be two of your six hours, and do board members, you have your own special training, and soon as you can talk to people, we'll talk to you about those, so.
That's the special training you and Jonathan have to have?
Yeah, yeah.
The rest of us have been through it many times.
That's all I have, sir.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good.